Uh, roll call, please. Uh, roll call, please. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Burnwell? Councilmember Burnwell? Councilmember Burnwell? Councilmember Burnwell?
Here. 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 Here.
Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Mendoza?
Here. 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 Here.
Councilmember Alisa Martinez? Councilmember Alisa Martinez? Councilmember Alisa Martinez? Councilmember Alisa Martinez?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Tucker? Mayor Pro Tem Tucker? Mayor Pro Tem Tucker? Mayor Pro Tem Tucker?
Here. 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 Here.
And Mayor Oparano is absent from the record. And Mayor Oparano is absent from the record. And Mayor Oparano is absent from the record. And Mayor Oparano is absent from the record.
Okay, please stand for the badge of keys. Okay, please stand for the badge of keys. Okay, please stand for the badge of keys. Okay, please stand for the badge of keys.
Ready, begin. Ready, begin. Ready, begin. Ready, begin. I collect allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's hands. I collect allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's hands. I collect allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's hands. I collect allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's hands. One nation, united by God, in this world with liberty and justice. One nation, united by God, in this world with liberty and justice. One nation, united by God, in this world with liberty and justice. One nation, united by God, in this world with liberty and justice.
Okay, adjustments to the agenda? Okay, adjustments to the agenda? Okay, adjustments to the agenda? Okay, adjustments to the agenda?
There are no adjustments to the agenda. There are no adjustments to the agenda. There are no adjustments to the agenda. There are no adjustments to the agenda.
Seeing no adjustments. Seeing no adjustments. Seeing no adjustments. Seeing no adjustments. City Attorney, report on closed session, actions. City Attorney, report on closed section, actions. Uh, City Attorney, report on closed section, actions. Uh, City Attorney, report on closed section, actions.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, this, the city council met in closed session and discussed one act of litigation listed on the agenda. This, the city council met in closed session and discussed one act of litigation listed on the agenda. This, the city council met in closed session and discussed one act of litigation listed on the agenda. This, the city council met in closed session and discussed one act of litigation listed on the agenda. Direction was given. Direction was given. Direction was given. Direction was given. The council also discussed one item of anticipated litigation. The council also discussed one item of anticipated litigation. The council also discussed one item of anticipated litigation. The council also discussed one item of anticipated litigation. That concludes my report. That concludes my report. That concludes my report. That concludes my report.
Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you. Next up, public comment. Next up, public comment. Next up, public comment. Next up, public comment. This is a time limited of three minutes for anyone wishing to address the city council on these matters. This is a time limited of three minutes for anyone wishing to address the city council on these matters. This is a time limited of three minutes for anyone wishing to address the city council on these matters. This is a time limited of three minutes for anyone wishing to address the city council on these matters. Is there any public comments? 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 Do we have any written 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 comments?
No comments. No comments. No comments. No comments.
Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you. Alright, up next is a presentation. 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 Presentation regarding the Imperial Police Cadet Program. Presentation regarding the Imperial Police Cadet Program. Presentation regarding the Imperial Police Cadet Program. Presentation regarding the Imperial Police Cadet Program.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. How you guys doing? How you guys doing? How you guys doing? How you guys doing?
Great. 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 Great.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
You're here to present our cadet program. 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 I'm Sergeant Hernandez from Pro Police Department. 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 I'm one of the advisors, one of the many advisors. I'm one of the advisors, one of the many advisors. I'm one of the advisors, one of the many advisors. I'm one of the advisors, one of the many advisors. You see the rest of the advisors back there. You see the rest of the advisors back there. You see the rest of the advisors back there. You see the rest of the advisors back there. And we're also missing the lead advisor, which is Officer Fiero. And we're also missing the lead advisor, which is Officer Fiero. And we're also missing the lead advisor, which is Officer Fiero. And we're also missing the lead advisor, which is Officer Fiero. She couldn't make it today, but I'm here today, and so are all them. She couldn't make it today, but I'm here today, and so are all them. She couldn't make it today, but I'm here today, and so are all them. She couldn't make it today, but I'm here today, and so are all them. So, the cadet program. So, the cadet program. So, the cadet program. So, the cadet program. The cadet program was started a couple months ago. The cadet program was started a couple months ago. The cadet program was started a couple months ago. The cadet program was started a couple months ago. The cadet program consists of juveniles between the ages of fourteen to twenty years old. The cadet program consists of juveniles between the ages of fourteen to twenty years old. The cadet program consists of juveniles between the ages of fourteen to twenty years old. The cadet program consists of juveniles between the ages of fourteen to twenty years old. And they basically get PG thirteen rated training of what it is to be a police officer. And they basically get PG thirteen rated training of what it is to be a police officer. And they basically get PG thirteen rated training of what it is to be a police officer. And they basically get PG thirteen rated training of what it is to be a police officer. So they go through defensive tactics, they go through rest and control, traffic stops, consensual encounters. So they go through defensive tactics, they go through rest and control, traffic stops, consensual encounters. So they go through defensive tactics, they go through rest and control, traffic stops, consensual encounters. So they go through defensive tactics, they go through rest and control, traffic stops, consensual encounters. They learn all those things. 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 On top of that, they learn leadership skills, responsibility, and other useful things that they're gonna need, On top of that, they learn leadership skills, responsibility, and other useful things that they're gonna need, On top of that, they learn leadership skills, responsibility, and other useful things that they're gonna need, On top of that, they learn leadership skills, responsibility, and other useful things that they're gonna need, you know, not only as in law enforcement, but if they choose to do anything else in life. you know, not only as in law enforcement, but if they choose to do anything else in life. you know, not only as in law enforcement, but if they choose to do anything else in life. you know, not only as in law enforcement, but if they choose to do anything else in life. Like responsibility and leadership, you can use that anywhere you go. Like responsibility and leadership, you can use that anywhere you go. Like responsibility and leadership, you can use that anywhere you go. Like responsibility and leadership, you can use that anywhere you go. This year, our cadets went to the Explorer Academy. This year, our cadets went to the Explorer Academy. This year, our cadets went to the Explorer Academy. This year, our cadets went to the Explorer Academy. It's called Explorer Academy, but it's also Cadet Academy. It's called Explorer Academy, but it's also Cadet Academy. It's called Explorer Academy, but it's also Cadet Academy. It's called Explorer Academy, but it's also Cadet Academy. It's in San Diego. It's in San Diego. It's in San Diego. It's in San Diego. It's a week long academy, which is a condensed, kinda like a boot camp for juveniles. It's a week long academy, which is a condensed, kinda like a boot camp for juveniles. It's a week long academy, which is a condensed, kinda like a boot camp for juveniles. It's a week long academy, which is a condensed, kinda like a boot camp for juveniles. It's really intense. It's really intense. It's really intense. It's really intense. Again, they focus on leadership, teamwork, resilience, and also they give other type of training such as rest and control. Again, they focus on leadership, teamwork, resilience, and also they give other type of training such as rest and control. Again, they focus on leadership, teamwork, resilience, and also they give other type of training such as rest and control. Again, they focus on leadership, teamwork, resilience, and also they give other type of training such as rest and control. They go through class, they do penal codes and vehicle codes and things like that. They go through class, they do penal codes and vehicle codes and things like that. They go through class, they do penal codes and vehicle codes and things like that. They go through class, they do penal codes and vehicle codes and things like that. So this year, these cadets successfully completed the academy, and we're very proud of them for doing so. So this year, these cadets successfully completed the academy, and we're very proud of them for doing so. So this year, these cadets successfully completed the academy, and we're very proud of them for doing so. So this year, these cadets successfully completed the academy, and we're very proud of them for doing so. Today, I'm gonna let them introduce themselves and give you a little bit of what they took from the academy this year. Today, I'm gonna let them introduce themselves and give you a little bit of what they took from the academy this year. Today, I'm gonna let them introduce themselves and give you a little bit of what they took from the academy this year. Today, I'm gonna let them introduce themselves and give you a little bit of what they took from the academy this year.
Good evening, everyone. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, good evening, everyone. Hello, my name is Cadet Trana Suarez. 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 I'm currently eighteen years old. 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 It's something positive I learned from the academy was I was able to mentally and physically challenge myself. It's something positive I learned from the academy was I was able to mentally and physically challenge myself. It's something positive I learned from the academy was I was able to mentally and physically challenge myself. It's something positive I learned from the academy was I was able to mentally and physically challenge myself. I didn't think I was able to. I didn't think I was able to. I didn't think I was able to. I didn't think I was able to.
My name is Cadet Salomedo. 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 I'm fifteen. I'm fifteen. I'm fifteen. I'm fifteen. It's something positive about the academy is methods of how to arrest people and how to defend yourself. It's something positive about the academy is methods of how to arrest people and how to defend yourself. It's something positive about the academy is methods of how to arrest people and how to defend yourself. It's something positive about the academy is methods of how to arrest people and how to defend yourself.
Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. My name is, 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 hello, everyone. I'm Cadet Andre Valtonis, and I'm fourteen years old. I'm Cadet Andre Valtonis, and I'm fourteen years old. I'm Cadet Andre Valtonis, and I'm fourteen years old. I'm Cadet Andre Valtonis, and I'm fourteen years old. The one thing I learned from the academy is to arrest people and defend myself and more be myself to all my life. The one thing I learned from the academy is to arrest people and defend myself and more be myself to all my life. The one thing I learned from the academy is to arrest people and defend myself and more be myself to all my life. The one thing I learned from the academy is to arrest people and defend myself and more be myself to all my life.
Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. My name is Cadet Armando Saavedra. 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 I'm fifteen years old. I'm fifteen years old. I'm fifteen years old. I'm fifteen years old. One positive thing I took from the academy is how to deal with gang members and how to identify narcotics. One positive thing I took from the academy is how to deal with gang members and how to identify narcotics. One positive thing I took from the academy is how to deal with gang members and how to identify narcotics. One positive thing I took from the academy is how to deal with gang members and how to identify narcotics.
Hello, everybody. Hello, everybody. Hello, everybody. Hello, everybody. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Cadet Anthony Bustamante. 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 I am currently fourteen years old. 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 And one positive thing I took from the academy was how to intensify gang members And one positive thing I took from the academy was how to intensify gang members And one positive thing I took from the academy was how to intensify gang members And one positive thing I took from the academy was how to intensify gang members and how to defend yourself and how, and how to defend yourself in any certain situations. and how, and how to defend yourself in any certain situations. and how, and how to defend yourself in any certain situations. in any certain situations.
Hello, everybody. Hello, everybody. Hello, everybody. Hello, everybody. Cadet Steve Cardenas. Cadet Steve Cardenas. Cadet Steve Cardenas. Cadet Steve Cardenas. I am fourteen years old. 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 One positive thing I took from the academy is teamwork, how to work as a team to not left or not leave anyone behind. One positive thing I took from the academy is teamwork, how to work as a team to not left or not leave anyone behind. One positive thing I took from the academy is teamwork, how to work as a team to not left or not leave anyone behind. One positive thing I took from the academy is teamwork, how to work as a team to not left or not leave anyone behind.
Alright, thanks. Alright, thanks. Alright, thanks. Alright, thanks.
So one thing I wanna emphasize is that the first day in the academy is extremely hard for them. So one thing I wanna emphasize is that the first day in the academy is extremely hard for them. So one thing I wanna emphasize is that the first day in the academy is extremely hard for them. So one thing I wanna emphasize is that the first day in the academy is extremely hard for them. It's, it's, you have drill instructors, you have like seven drill instructors. It's, it's, you have drill instructors, you have like seven drill instructors. It's, it's, you have drill instructors, you have like seven drill instructors. It's, it's, you have drill instructors, you have like seven drill instructors. There's about two hundred and ten cadets. 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 There's about, I think it's seventeen different agencies throughout the state. There's about, I think it's seventeen different agencies throughout the state. There's about, I think it's seventeen different agencies throughout the state. There's about, I think it's seventeen different agencies throughout the state. And all they do, these, these are, these drill instructors are drill instructors. And all they do, these, these are, these drill instructors are drill instructors. And all they do, these, these are, these drill instructors are drill instructors. And all they do, these, these are, these drill instructors are drill instructors. They go to your face, they start yelling at you, they try to break you. They go to your face, they start yelling at you, they try to break you. They go to your face, they start yelling at you, they try to break you. They go to your face, they start yelling at you, they try to break you. And that's one thing that, a lesson that I think they're gonna take for their rest of their lives, And that's one thing that, a lesson that I think they're gonna take for the rest of their lives, And that's one thing that, a lesson that I think they're gonna take for the rest of their lives, And that's one thing that, a lesson that I think they're gonna take for the rest of their lives, that no matter how hard people get to them, they can always succeed. that no matter how hard people get to them, they can always succeed. that no matter how hard people get to them, they can always succeed. that no matter how hard people get to them, they can always succeed. And that's, that's part of the training that they receive in this, in this academy. And that's, that's part of the training that they receive in this, in this academy. And that's, that's part of the training that they receive in this, in this academy. And that's, that's part of the training that they receive in this, in this academy. And I, again, I'm extremely, extremely proud of these kids here for successfully completing that. And I, again, I'm extremely, extremely proud of these kids here for successfully completing that. And I, again, I'm extremely, extremely proud of these kids here for successfully completing that. And I, again, I'm extremely, extremely proud of these kids here for successfully completing that. Again, the first day is, if you make, if you make it the first day, you're, you're gonna be good. Again, the first day is, if you make, if you make it the first day, you're, you're gonna be good. Again, the first day is, if you make, if you make it the first day, you're, you're gonna be good. Again, the first day is, if you make, if you make it the first day, you're, you're gonna be good. But it's that first, first couple of hours that they're really there yelling at you and making you do pushups, But it's that first, first couple of hours that they're really there yelling at you and making you do pushups, But it's that first, first couple of hours that they're really there yelling at you and making you do pushups, But it's that first, first couple of hours that they're really there yelling at you and making you do pushups, making you run, what do they do, make you walk like a duck, right? making you run, what do they do, make you walk like a duck, right? making you run, what do they do, make you walk like a duck, right? making you run, what do they do, make you walk like a duck, right? What else did they make you do? 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 What is it? What is it? What is it? What is it?
Lunges. 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 Lunges.
Lunges, I mean, going up and downstairs. 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 So I'm extremely proud of these, these cadets here today. So I'm extremely proud of these, these cadets here today. So I'm extremely proud of these, these cadets here today. So I'm extremely proud of these, these cadets here today. Another round of applause, please. Another round of applause, please. Another round of applause, please. Another round of applause, please.
Alright. 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 Alright.
Before we leave, I wanna show you guys a little video that Officer Fiero put together for you guys. Before we leave, I wanna show you guys a little video that Officer Fiero put together for you guys. Before we leave, I wanna show you guys a little video that Officer Fiero put together for you guys. Before we leave, I wanna show you guys a little video that Officer Fiero put together for you guys. If IT can help me with that? If IT can help me with that? If IT can help me with that? If IT can help me with that?
That's the final run.
So, any questions?
Any question?
No, just thank you.
Just to congratulate you guys and good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, kudos to all of you who made it through that. Get you guys all ready for the police academy.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're trying to find a camera, we'd like to get a picture. Does Dennis got it? If not, I can take it. Dennis got it?
Take one.
Dennis? Oh, Dennis, got it, okay. Dennis?
Yes, advisor's over here. And then take two sets forward.
You're gonna be able to see.
Okay, on three. One, two, three.
So you're gonna be for the paper, you guys.
Bye, thank you. Bye-bye.
Alright, next up is B, consent agenda. All items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council with one motion without discussion. Should any council members or other persons request that any item be considered separately, that item will then be taken up at the time as determined by the mayor.
Make a motion to approve.
I got a motion and a second. Please vote.
Tell James to judge us. Again, there you go.
There we go.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay. C, action item. Discussion, action, approve, disapprove. C one, purchase of a raw water flow meter for the water treatment plant. Presenter David Dale, Public Service Director.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. This item is to replace the raw water flow meter at the water treatment plant. It's failed. We're currently using a backup treatment oh meter system, which is an assertion, it's not as accurate. And due to the cost, we're bringing it to council for approval. I'm happy to answer any questions on the item.
Make a motion to approve.
I got a motion in a second, please vote.
Motion carries.
Yeah, there you go.
Motion carries four zero.
Alright, next is C two. Purchase of ultraviolet UV disinfectant parts from annual maintenance at the wa- wastewater treatment plant. Presented by David Dale.
This item again is an annual expense. We have budgeted ninety thousand dollars this year for. Uh the current uh cost for this equipment is forty one thousand three hundred ninety nine dollars and ninety two cents. I'm happy to answer any questions. Basically, it's for disinfection of the wastewater treat uh water as it exits the wastewater treatment plant.
So is this one, we're only gonna get this cost once, so there was a fifty thousand dollar savings?
There may be more, uh but currently, this is what we that this is what we need, but if if additional units fail, we may need to purchase more. But for now, this is what we need.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second?
I got a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Next up, C three, approved budget amendment number three. Number one, sorry about that, for the manhole rehab and ninety project presenter David Dale.
Uh thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh when before I got here, they we had the city had contracted with Web and Associates to do a manhole real uh rehabilitation project. But that project only had a few manholes in the um in the scope. And in our CIP, we have about five hundred thousand dollars for manhole rehabilitation and also including um some rehabilitation of wet wells at two lift stations. So I asked the Web and Associates to create a prepare um proposal to do the additional work. And this is what uh came back thirty one thousand two hundred eighty five dollars. Well within the percentage that I would expect for a five hundred thousand dollar project.
Alrighty, any question?
Make a motion to approve.
I got a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Next up, C four, award a contract for Sunset Park Playground Shade Project. Bid number twenty twenty four dash oh five presenter Tony.
Good evening, uh Mayor Protem, members of the council. Uh this item uh before you is the uh result of a competitive bid process completed. Uh we received one bid um turned in by USA Shade Inc. Uh we asked council uh award the bid to USA Shade Inc. in the amount of a hundred and twenty five thousand five hundred dollars. And also approve a ten percent contingency. Um this uh as a reminder, will give us two hip and fabric shades, one forty five by forty five. One thirty five by thirty five that would completely cover both structures. So I and I'll stand for any questions.
So they're providing the shade and installing it as well?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Alright, up next, C five. Award co- contract for labor compliance service for Sunset Park Playground Shade Project. Reference number twenty twenty four dash oh three presenter Tony Lopez Parks Director.
Again, thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh we we've also at the at the same time uh solicited for labor compliance services for the same project. Uh we received only one bid uh back for the labor compliance consulting services. That was Southern Cal- uh Labor Compliance Consultants of Southern California in the amount of three thousand dollars. So we would ask council uh allow us to award the labor, the contract to Labor Compliance Consultants of Southern California.
What is the length of your construction?
The construction portion of the project is going to be uh thirty days.
Why do we have a three month contract with Labor Compliance Consultants?
So the manufacturing of the shade also uh triggers and then the report. So the construction part of it, they prepare the report and everything that comes after that. So once they conclude their reports, their site visits and things like that, they also work on reports and different things to submit to the city for our records after that fact. So it's several months of work on their part to to complete the report for the city.
And just as a side note, I know the last couple contracts I worked with them, um they started going to this flat rate for a month. I would encourage the you to consider an hourly with a not to exceed. Because I I know there's times where they can go a whole month and all they're getting is non-performance reports. And they're still billing you the same amount as they are, as if they're out there doing inspections and and writing reports. So I would can I would encourage you in the future, when you write your RFP to include it as an hourly with a not to exceed.
I know we have, I know we do have, uh when we have must receive multiple, we do have some that uh have gone uh and submitted an hourly report as well. Uh and what I've seen from past experience with uh labor compliance, RFPs or or uh the the quotes we receive back, the hourlies are always the higher end. Always about two or three thousand dollars more than uh this way. So we we've used labor compliance uh uh so of the consultants of Southern California before. So we're just going with what was submitted and and uh but I I uh I'll take that and I'll make that as a note for the future though.
Thank you.
And when we post the RFPs, does it go on like Planet Bids or is it just published?
It's it's on our city website and then it's also uh we email consultants that we've worked with before. So we solicit for bids and we put also put it's not subject to uh publication on in the in the newspaper.
Alright, any other question? Seeing none, I'll accept.
I'm gonna give a motion to approve. I'll second.
I got a motion and a second, vote please.
Motion carries four zero.
Alright, up next, C six. Purchase of two Polaris side by sides for the Parks and Recreation Special Events Division, um presenter Tony.
Yes, uh good evening again, uh council members. Uh we've, as you know, expanded an additional block in the downtown corridor. We've added a few events which include five K runs and different things like that. Um with the end of parades, uh we've always in the past borrowed side by sides from Marty Coyne. To maneuver uh different staff members, equipment. Um yourselves, judges and 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 different people that need to go to one end of the parade. To the the other side. Um we've also encountered uh during the last few years situations where it's so heavily crowded. People park in the emergency access areas in the alleys. Uh where vehicles are not, uh our our city vehicles can't get through. And then once you get a certain amount of people uh in the event area, it's hard to maneuver or bring in vehicles. We've had situations where even AMR has had a difficulty coming in. So I think these uh side by sides uh would be a benefit to the events division. Just to have the ability to maneuver in in around the events. Have uh these be uh also a tool to uh have in case of emergencies, to get people to the medical tents. Uh during our races, in case we have somebody that's injured, bring them back and have these placed at strategic points throughout the events. Uh to have uh to use on our end. Um this is also, uh these are also gonna serve the city in a in different capacities. The Community Development Department as well also utilize these on a regular basis to do surveying. And different uh city infrastructure assessing. Um and by uh purchasing them. Uh originally, the Community Development Department had proposed to purchase their own. This way, uh it they would be able to utilize these units as well. Uh in talking to uh Captain Sheffield today, this would be also a resource for uh the parade, the fairgrounds detail that they do there, uh they'd be able to utilize these there as well. So I feel that these would be a a huge benefit to our department uh and as well as other departments within the city.
Alrighty, and um so they can legally be driven on the streets?
Yes, so as part of the uh package, they are all enclosed, AC, uh heated uh AC. Uh lockable doors, uh truck, uh trunk or a bed space. Uh and they have a street legal kit, uh headlights, turn signals, uh windshield wipers. Uh and all that that uh it's required.
Just out of curiosity, do they get an exempt plate or how does that work?
Do they have to go through a process at the DMV?
They they just have to meet the requirements that are specified by the state and and once it's plated, it's legal.
Okay, just I've been asked, so that's why I said I'll figure it out.
Not knowing the the exact models that they're getting, I know that the the for the side by sides, once they put them out. You have to have that street legal kit in order to meet all the vehicle requirements for the vehicle code. And once you do that, they're legally permitted to be on the streets.
So you just go through the DMV process and they give you a license plate?
So the the way that he registers it, he's gonna be registering it as a street legal side by side if I if I recall correctly.
I'm just curious, what made you guys choose those versus maybe a golf cart that could do the same thing?
So as we were going through the selection process, we we looked at a bunch of different models. We looked at also different brands, John Deere, uh more uh stripped down um versions of what we uh now uh presenting to you. Um for what the use of every department that's gonna be able to utilize them in the summer. And for them to be year round, they had to be fully enclosed. And as we built models from uh that were uh either electric or otherwise. Um some didn't offer uh HVAC sys- HVAC systems, some didn't offer different things. And these were the most complete units that had everything on them for the price that we could afford.
But our venture during.
I'm sorry?
Our venture when it's nice outside.
Right, but then when community development uses them, they're gonna utilize them for uh in during the entire year. So they'll be using it through the summer and and also uh during those times where you can't be out there without the and the the kit, the street legal kit requires a front windshield and all the other things that uh that 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 don't need to have to have the street legal status.
I'm kinda curious, whenever you talk about using them at special events, are you talking about driving these right down Imperial Avenue?
I'm talking about maneuvering them through the alleyways where uh people are not supposed to park. And vehicles cannot no longer fit because they park on both sides of the alleyway.
Though I just my concern was I I can picture these things being driven down the middle of the event.
No.
Where there there's pedestrians around and now you're talking about enclosing and that just to me narrows the vision even more. And if you've got a lot of pedestrians around, I just I'm cons- I have a concern about with, you know, if they're being taken right down the middle.
Yeah, and and uh I don't know if you've ever noticed that we've we've actually already utilized uh similar side by sides. When we do have them and Coyne does let us borrow them. We've stationed one at the emergency at the emergency, the medical tent. That was the stationary in case something happens, in case uh somebody or participant uh uh um uh an attendee of the event gets injured, they're able to bring that person out to the ambulance.
So you mentioned that they were being borrowed before, it was something happened where uh you know, we can't rent them or borrow them anymore?
Well, they uh Coyne Marsh West was just gracious enough to let us borrow them at no cost.
And that was only for special events, not for
Right.
What community development?
Not year round, it was a during the parade uh type deal uh where they weren't kind enough to let us borrow a couple of units.
What was the um thought process for needing two?
So when you're trying to maneuver a uh bunch of different equipment and a bunch of different people, I don't know if you guys, it's kind of a behind the scenes. Where we have to get uh several different people through to the judging area, uh not only yourselves, but the judges.
I've never used one, that's why I'm asking.
It's a it's it's very difficult to um maneuver multiple people and just one. So having two of these will allow us to have uh drop off different things with the audio station, the announcing stations, different things. In those circumstances where now we have streets closed and we wanna remove the larger city vehicles out of the way. It allows us to cart different things from wh- First Street all the way to Fifteenth Street. Uh for our five K races, uh from one point to the other. Um maneuver staff to their check-in stations, to the color run stations and different things like that. Without having to drive down those paths where our vehicles don't uh shouldn't shouldn't be on. Uh because we have different things they can uh run over and break. These these will allow us to the maneuverability to get into these areas where we can't get into with the regular regular sized vehicles.
And you mentioned that there's an issue with the parking, like illegal parking in the alleys. Have we had PD address that? I mean, you give a few citations and people get the hint.
We have had uh where PD has uh you know, we've notified PD. And then, you know, we've had also had vehicles towed. So we do place no parking signs throughout the entire stretch. These uh alleyways are uh closed off for emergency access only. But as people do, they disregard or move the cones or move the different things and just park wherever they feel like they wanna park.
It sounds like something the PD can take care of.
Yeah. I mean, it's it's something we do coordinate with them on on site, but it's hard to when there's fifteen, twenty, thirty cars. Finding the owners and different things is is uh
So aside from what you, sorry, um can we let the public know what capacity co- community development would be potentially using these Polaris's for, like exactly?
Yes, so um data collection, um surveying work. Uh there's a couple of things that we we need a vehicle that's we be able to uh collect that data in no time. We have larger vehicles and sometimes it's very difficult to, you know, get the equipment on and off and whatnot with these vehicles and the way that we're gonna equip them. Sometimes we're gonna be able to collect some of the data, just you know, on the side, real, you know, just next to the side where curb and gutter. Manholes and whatnot, so it'll be pretty easier for us uh to do that with the vehicles.
Is it something you could do with like a small pickup truck?
Uh we have small pickup trucks, but we haven't been able to, it's it's not that efficient. We do the job, we do perform, um but we we utilize um these vehicles in other, you know, in other areas. And it's a lot easier, a lot faster, uh a lot more efficient. Um and yes, I mean, we can use other vehicles, but it it they bring they bring a lot of benefits.
What makes it faster?
Uh getting on and off of vehicle, that part of it, setting up the equipment. Uh it it takes time, it takes a little bit of time. Um we with this type of vehicles, sometimes we don't have to get off the vehicle. Um we can do it from the side.
But this one has doors too, so that's why I'm like kinda confused, cuz you can't drive with the doors open regardless.
True, um but I think getting getting the vehicle, I mean, we we've done it in which if it's a vacant lot, uh I mean, we just open the door, uh collect the data and then go to the next point, collect the data. And with a larger vehicle, we have to get the equipment off of the vehicle and collect the data and then put it back into the vehicle. And with with smaller vehicles, it's a lot faster, it's a lot more efficient.
It's whenever you're using these, is it localized or I if you've got a a site on the other side of the freeway down the highway, how you gonna? Are you gonna be driving it down Highway eighty six or how do you get it to that job site to do your work? And you're gonna be collecting data out past, you know, the hotel or something, are you driving it down?
That's not gonna be something that's permitted, you're gonna be pretty limited.
Not through Highway eighty six, I mean, we're gonna use the backwards, whatever it's permitted.
What 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 speed limit is it permitting?
So it would follow the same speed limits as the surface streets, but it's not allowed to get on an interstate. On an interstate, a highway that exceeds what would be the recommended speed of fifty five to and sixty seventy. Those areas, it it would be limited to residential and surface streets.
Well, technically, you're supposed to be forty five in the city.
It it so that's still that's still a four lane divided highway and it's not gonna be permitted to hit.
So you can't cross?
If you do it at a ninety degree angle, I believe that would be permitted, but it depends upon which intersection you use. So there are gonna be some some limitations.
I'm serious, like can they cross over AMPM or right there by old Circle K, I'm gonna call it Circle K.
It's safer to go to the stoplight.
It would be safer to go to stoplight.
I'm just wondering, cuz I mean, it's not like a car car. Cuz if you're doing surveys on the other side of the east, well, I call it the east side of Imperial. Like what happens, you like put on the truck, we'll take it over there, no?
And ta- and take the Tacoma?
I I appreciate the the further explanation and and the justification for it. I there's two concerns I have, number one, if we can address the driving on high the highway and make sure that doesn't happen. And number two, Tony, I I really have, I just wanna make sure if the council does decide on and and prove this. That it's known, I I don't like the idea of those things going down Imperial Avenue through the crowd. I mean, I I understand if it's an emergency, yes, we need to get, you know, medical attention to someone quickly or we need to address it quickly. But you know, collecting trash, transporting a judge here or there, I don't like the idea of it going through the crowd.
Yeah, no, the these would not be used for uh maintenance services um at the end of the night, it's very difficult. Uh that's most of that's done on foot, so when they're collecting trash, uh there is no way. Uh outside of an emerg- uh medical, we're talking about the operational side uh when you start to see vendors come in. And then you're now you're combating with their cars and our cars and everything else, all the above before the crowd gets there. These would be very beneficial to have just to maneuver around all of that, because when you have uh Hawaiian shaved ice or all these other things with trucks and trailers. And then we have our service trucks and our flatbeds and things like that, trying to get ice chests to the VIP or different things all around the event. It's very hard to maneuver, I wanna get, my instinct is to get vehicles out of there as soon as possible for the safety factor and. The collision factor, right, because we have now uh added a bunch of vendors that are now in and allowed to set up their tents. So now we can't even drive, uh we have very narrow uh area to drive down Imperial Avenue at that point. So these will be beneficial at at that point where we're preparing in the operations before. The crowd, once the crowd gets there, now we're we're switching over to, in the case of an emergency. Uh these vehicles will also be outfitted with strobes. So then, you know, you have strobe lighting, you have the street legal kits, the front ends and stuff, so they'll have flashes and things. To uh identify them as a vehicle that's a city vehicle and that, you know, hey, let's maneuver through the crowd because we have an injured person. On board or or the or in that case.
As as a council member, I have to consider the the liability of it in that, but as a. A participant or somebody's going there, it's a pet peeve just to have to walk around vehicles just driving through because they feel like. Walking, they don't feel like walking to the other end.
And then Ethan, I think finding out if it is able to go where you guys actually need to go. And cross over the other side is much needed, I know.
And my understanding is that we were able to um uh and it's because the speed. Forty-five, you can't drive up to fifty-five, but. Yeah, we need to make sure.
But yeah, I don't think you guys are going down eighty-six. Back roads is fine, but like. Can we legally? Oh, that's all you need is somebody's gonna be like, oh, look at them driving in their little golf carts and we're not allowed to take ours down yet, that's all you need.
Any other suggestions?
Can we find out those items and table it for now?
You wanna table it for now? I got a motion to table.
Uh can we give directions on what items it is that we're asking them to come back with?
I'm asking street legality. That's my item.
That's directed to the chief, right?
Well, I will say one more thing before you guys make that decision, these units are not uh. We have rebates and things tied into these pricing, so if the tables, we might lose those rebates. And and the units are not ours, they're not guaranteed ours too, so we're we're kind of a little bit. They've been patient with us um in that regard, but I'm just letting you know that those those are outlining factors.
I think they're legal because I see farmers every day driving John Deere down the road and spraying weed and stuff. But I can understand not being on eighty-six for safety reason and you wouldn't do that anyway.
I just have a hard time spending seventy, almost seventy-three thousand dollars for our four events a year.
There's we have, there's eight, there's eight events, um two of those are five Ks.
There's two five Ks now?
The autism now has a five K within it.
I thought that was a. The autisms.
It is, but we without without the city support, they would not be able to, you know, str- uh us helping them with the logistical side. And helping us uh close down the intersection, the different things, they probably wouldn't be able to do it on their own.
Miss Stacy?
I have nothing else.
What do you wanna do?
Personally, I'm willing to make a motion to approve it, but if you have some reservations and you.
No, as long as we can drive where we need to drive to, that's all I care about.
I got a motion now.
He's not gonna give us a.
I think we have a police chief that's gonna keep them honest and keep them where they need to be.
I don't know, I think it's a big black eye for the city buying two new polarises.
Okay then, I got a motion, but no second?
That was a motion to table or approve?
Can I second it?
Motion was to approve. The motion is to.
Motion to approve. And if I can second, I'll second that and then let's go to a vote. Then we can do rock, paper, scissors.
Motion carries three zero. I mean, three one, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, everybody. We had excitement for tonight, oh, Don, you got an easy one now, big guy. C seven, award contract for the seventh street rehab rehab and pedestrian improvements project. From southeast street to southeast street, bid number two twenty-four dash oh four, Oton Mora.
Mayor Protem, uh Fernando Williams, our engineer tag will present this item.
Good evening, Protem and um council members. Uh regarding this agenda item, this is about the the award for the seventh street rehabilitation pedestrian improvements. From southeast street to southeast street. Uh per agenda item, C C oh five dash fifteen dash twenty-four, item C three. The community development department conducted a competitive bid to the uh before mentioned project. The project includes, but it's not limited to. The pulverization of existing asphalt in place, blending that product with existing class two base and recompacting. Installing a four inch thick layer of asphalt rubber hot mix gap graded. Removal and replacement of existing ADA ramps, concrete curb and gutter, driveways and cross gutter and installation of thermoplastic striping. Uh in the agenda item, the exhibit two, that's the improvement plans. The staff released the bid and published it in the city website, Holdville Tribune, Callexico Chronicle. And several several plan rooms, additionally, staff sent out the bid to a total of ten local and non-local respected and dependable contractors. The following three bids were received during the formal bidding process, rope engineering, LC paving ceiling, primary construction aggregates incorporated. After through the review of these bids, the staff is recommending the contract to be awarded to rope engineering. And in addition to that, it's the recommendation for an authorization to the twenty-five percent. Contingency for the construction of this project. So if you have any questions regarding this uh agenda item, please feel free to let me know.
What's the construction date, the construction schedule?
The construction schedule, it's stated to be. For this one, it's stated to be. Two weeks from now, uh in the middle of.
How many construction days?
It's um. Thirty, thirty, I'm sorry, thirty construction. I apologize for that.
It's right in time for school. But it's gonna get done.
Uh it it is gonna get done and then one of the one of the issues that we had here is that we didn't get the. Uh authorization letter in time, uh we were waiting for it since uh May, June and we just received it.
We just had to wait for Caltrans to send the allocation letter, uh. We've been ready to to go out with this project, but it's just been this administrative um hurdle that we had to overcome. They actually told us to just wait because they had an issue with another agency that went on with the process without getting that letter and. They didn't specify, but they got into into trouble, yeah, so we wanted to avoid that.
So I would like to redirect all the complaining parents that I will get starting August nineteenth to Caltrans. But no, I uh I will say I understand Caltrans doing things on Caltrans time, so. They're never uh never quick.
Do we have a plan in place for notification to the parents of and?
Can we notify the school and give them a contingency plan and let them know the dates?
No, we haven't, we we now now the if if approved, um we'll we'll notify the contractor to give us the. The all the documents, so we can give them a notice to proceed, so once we give them a notice to proceed, we're gonna notice everyone as to when we're gonna start in 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 contingency.
I would put like our little flashing thing, I would put it on Facebook. Rants and raves, insta- everywhere, cuz. Yeah, it's gonna be tough when everybody wants to take their children and drop them off at school.
You put a contract Caltrans at.
No, I remember. That street's getting done, but oh my gosh, the nightmare of parking.
No, I understand, I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, then I need to go back to presentation item A one. I messed up, um Imperial Police Cadet Program presented by Sergeant Alberto Hernandez. Officer Emily Bustamantes and Officer Dario Salazar, I just found this up on my desk, sorry about that. And supported by the chief. All right, next up um is department reports, hold on.
Um real quick, just the the hotel, it's getting closer by the minute. Uh we have asphalt on the parking lot, uh there's been some delays that we're supposed to open on July fifteenth. But it's continued moving forward, uh they're training people. Um the the new chef is training their staff and whatnot, so it's it's getting there. So hopefully in the next thirty days, we'll see um some openings.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dale.
I'm I'm happy to report that uh this week we have two proposals due. Um weed abatement proposal, which will be citywide on multiple divisions.
I'm excited about that.
Uh janitorial services is also due the uh this week. And then next week, we have our various roads overlay project is due on August fifteenth, so really excited about that and hoping. To move that forward as soon as possible, um there's gonna be a a lot of construction going on in the city, a lot of roads being completed in the next month or two. With everything that community development's doing and and between that project and and theirs, whole city's gonna be rebuilt, so. Looking forward to it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dale, uh Mr. Tony.
Uh members of council, uh Friday we'll have the end of summer bash. Uh I believe we've sent you guys all invitations, we would love to see you guys all there, we could always use the help. In one way or the other, uh whether it's serving hot dogs or doing something, I know that uh council member Ida. Uh Obeso Martinez was there with the city birthday and so was Mister uh Mayor Abrano. So we'd love to see you guys at the events, the public likes to see you guys there, so we hope you guys can join us and everybody from the public watching. Uh this Friday from seven to ten at the Imperial Pool, we'll have uh live music, uh food. Uh different raffle prizes, we have some really cool prizes we're raffling off too and you have to be there to accept your prize, so please join us on Friday.
Thank you very much, um Alex?
Um council, um mayor president and council members, a couple of things, uh we have a new cyber administrator. After a long process, uh we also decided to bring Luis Anguiano as a new cyber administrator. He goes uh a bachelor degree and other certifications related to cyber security, so I'm happy to to move him to that position. And also tomorrow is gonna be opening the position for um IT technician three to replace his position. And we are estimating to be uh or to have the interviews for that position on. Uh August the twentieth, so we'll see how it goes after that. Uh this week, we finally started the uh deployment of our our ERP, new ERP. It's gonna be a huge challenge, but uh but at least we started it, so. Uh lastly, uh we request authorization to the city manager to kinda. Rename, rebranding our department uh for last week or a week ago. We request to be instead of be information technology to be innovation and technology. That's more in line what we're doing in the department, and as you know, we have now cybersecurity as a division, GIS. Uh and also what we're gonna be doing with broadband as well, so that's my report, but I will ask for any question that you may have.
Any question?
Good luck on your recruitment. Good luck on your recruitment.
Oh, thank you very much for the cybersecurity, we have very good uh candidate, uh um there was people from all the country. Um so for the for the IT technician three, we'll see how it goes.
Had better luck than Sonos, alrighty.
Next up the chief.
So I have no new updates, but I did wanna extend a thank you for recognizing and appreciating the efforts of staff who have. Donated some of their own time and plenty of their their hours to making the cadet program a success. Especially to the young men and women of the program, it's actually, it's fun to watch them go through that program and. Come out of the other end smiling and happy about what they've accomplished, thank you.
And making them speak in public.
Yeah, oh absolutely, that's that that's something that uh you could tell that some of them are struggling more than others. That's the fun part of it.
Yeah, you could you could say it that way.
They did a great job.
All right, fire.
Nothing to report, Ross head.
All right, thank you, Diana? Nothing tonight, city attorney? Ido Basomartinez, you're up next, oh, come on.
No, um Imperial Valley Regional Chamber. Has a meet and greet for businesses, if you want, I'm sure it's for everybody with the district attorney, it's on April, April, why am I saying April? August um fifteenth, it's on their website if you guys are interested. Our business people, anybody could go, but it's more geared towards business, so there's that. And then I probably most likely will melt out there at the bash on Friday again.
All right, thank you, KDB.
I'm not lying when I say I have nothing to report, so.
The hot pedal's still doing good? Don't bring that subject up.
We had a meeting tomorrow.
Alrighty, Dennis, I almost forgot you.
Nothing for me this evening.
All right, thanks, and next up, we will. Report by myself regarding appointment to fill an unscheduled vacancy in the planning commission. And I appoint Francisco Correio, which I can see he's not here, but he'll be at the planning commission. And adjournment to the next regularly scheduled meeting of Imperial City Council, Wednesday, August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.